Topic discussion because amount of material that we're unpacking in this conversation is quite a bit. So I, what I really want to encourage is as we go through specific topics, if you have questions and you want to break down kind of the, the stuff we're presenting in a bit more detail, just stop me. Let's have those conversations because it's, it's going to be really important. Also outside of this conversation, if, if you have those questions pop up, I have cards with me. You guys have email address for me. Don't hesitate to reach out to our group and we'll get you answers. So I've kind of broken.
Anyone that don't know who you are and where you're from, can you state your name and who you're from?
Yep, absolutely. And everybody behind me that might not know, I've met everybody up here. Brandon Robbins, Reedy Financial Group. And then this is Reagan Ekins, Reedy Financial Group as well. And anything more you want us to talk about? And we, we've been asked to, to basically do a study on the Senate Enrolled Act One impact specifically for, I guess it would be the property tax, income tax phase in period over the next six to eight years here. So we've got a little bit more on there, but we probably won't spend a lot of time on that as we get into more detail on these other topics. So now I'm going to start with the local income tax discussion, okay? I tried to keep these topics very specific. That way we could kind of break them down and then bring them all together at the end. And toward the end, we're going to kind of go in local income tax, we're going to go property tax, new deduction system, projections on revenues, things like that. Most of that piece is going to be county specific with a little bit of intertwining of, of other units. And then at the end, we were asked to kind of compile a lot of that data for all units. And I've got a lot of discussion on that as well. Kind of got a breakdown on that as well. And then we've got a couple of other slides on some of the other legislative changes. But like I said, maybe those are just reading ones and we can talk about everything else in more detail ahead of those. So current lit structure is what we're looking at right now. Our, our current local income tax structure has a 2.5% expenditure cap rate. And essentially what that expenditure cap rate means is that's the money that we can, we can do a rate for to get dollars into our budget, okay? That's your public safety, economic development, certified shares, jail correctional. And the total cap rate is 3.75% in the state. And that includes an additional, what they call the property tax relief, which you guys don't have a component of that. So we're not even going to go into the weeds on that one. But the point is, the 3.75% rate is now down to a 2.9% rate cap. No county in the state of Indiana, other than one, is at three. Nobody's at 3.75. And most of the counties we found on average are around that 2% current, under the current rate structure. So this is what's phasing in in 2028. Before I go there, your certified shares are at 1.25%. Those go to your general funds. Those go to pretty much every other unit. Because you're in Old Caddie County, the schools actually receive a portion of what the old PTRC was. I'm going to talk about that in more depth later as well. You also have a public safety rate at the 0.05, economic development at 0.25, and your jail correctional at 0.2%. The public safety and economic development go to the county and to the municipal units. The jail correctional is only going to the county. So that's going to be very similar to how we're going to start to see this new income tax structure work as far as how they're assessed on taxpayers in the county. The current rate is uniform across every taxpayer. So everybody in, in the county pays that 1.75%. And the biggest thing I will tell you before we transition to the new discussion is that we're essentially breaking down that pot of money on income tax under our current calculations kind of as a percent of levy. So if you levy more as a community, you generally get a bigger piece of that income tax pot. The new system that we're about to transition to, you can see, I've got the numbers for the current certifications. Those are 25, 26 just got released. But just for reference, at the bottom of this, you can see the county total certified lit is 23 million. Columbus has about 26 million and DCSE, the school, actually receives about 2 million. That 2 million for the school, and I'm going to reference this in the future, there's other schools obviously, that goes away. And as of now, there's no off-setting revenue stream that the schools are going to receive from that income tax. Not even under our current, our new income tax system. So that's been a concern of ours since it came out. We live in a Caddie County, I live in a Caddie County, he actually lives in Bartholomew. Same thing's happening there. So that's been a big discussion with some of my friends at, at the schools as well. So, but we talked about levy-based system, the new system, if we want to transition to what this is going to look like. And this screen might be better for everybody to look at because that one's kind of hard to see.
Can, can we go back to that last one for a second?
Yes ma'am.
Because I think something that I wanted to point out is that under our lit rate, while that's 1.75%, the percentage that comes directly to Bartholomew County is really about 0.72%.
Because the other goes to.
The city and the other units, et cetera, et cetera.
Townships.
Yes.
Yeah, your certified shares goes to town.
So just for Bartholomew County, ours is about 0.72%.
Okay.
That would be 0.414% for certified shares, 0.0195 for public safety, 0.086 for economic development, and then the 0.2% for the jail correctional.
Okay.
That's a great point because that, this next slide's going to change that a lot. Are you good, are we good to go forward?
Yeah.
So under this new lit structure, if we were to, and I'm going to keep trying to move forward because I got quite a bit of information, like I said, to unpack here. But again, if you have questions, just throw them out. Let's talk about them. Throw out the ideas and the structure that you just looked at on that last slide and let's just start from scratch. That's essentially what we're doing in 2028. Everything that's in a green box, the county now has control over. Okay, technically you guys were the adopting body anyways for a rate, but you didn't really dictate where it went. That was based on percent 11. Now it's set up a little bit differently. So there's different types that you can implement and their calculations are set up, you know, based on whatever that rate ends up being. The first one on the far left box is the 1.2% that is county only. So essentially you're taking that 0.2%, which was part of what Pia just referenced, inside of that, the 0.7. That 0.2% is essentially multiplied times six in this setting. So you, you as the county would receive quite a bit more. Every single taxpayer is assessed inside of the county, that 1.2% if you did it, you did the full amount. That is 100% to you guys. Essentially, we anticipate that to go to your general fund and replace all the other income taxes that you guys had before. There's no more public safety, economic development, jail tax, none of that. This is just your county services of 1.2%. That portion is the first portion that you guys would have to implement. The next portion is, and again, all these are optional in how you set them up, but you will lose the old income tax. So you'll want to do some variation of these. The next three are essentially set up to have the county make a decision to help assist, I guess, in, in other community, other units ability to generate income tax. So the fire protection and EMS, even though it says EMS, I have confirmed 100%, it does not go to the county. And I don't know if they're going to change it in the next legislature. I actually had some conversations with legislatures about that because I don't know that they fully realize that. But the 0.4% is only for municipal units that provide fire, fire protection districts to which you do not have, and fire protection territories, which you have one of those. The other thing that can go to is townships, but it's got to be done through an ordinance process. I did find this out as well through the legislation. And it's got to be done through a request process. It's not done through the calculation, separate completely. Because essentially the townships are set up in the next column. So we'll talk about that in a minute. But the 0.4% is, is distributed based on, so everybody in the county would, would be taxed this 0.4% or up to this 0.4%. And, and it's set up based on population and the geographical boundary, square mileage of the area that has the fire protection times 20. I don't know why they use times 20. It's, it's a ratio formula that they put in there. But we, we essentially have that built in as we'll show you the numbers here in a little bit.
So when you talk about an ordinance, who does the ordinance?
You guys would have to decide on that if there was a request from the township fires.
And you're going to, everyone, so I would be paying towards if German Township, Rock Creek Township and all of them have an ordinance for each of their townships?
No, 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 no. The way that it, the way that it read was that if townships requested some of the 0.4 for fire protection inside of their townships, the county would basically have to say yes or no and establish an ordinance process to, to say, hey, we're going to, I think it comes off the top. It doesn't define it well, but we did find that little carrot inside of the statute as we were doing this, this research. I think what the intention of the township piece of it, or making the townships whole was, is the next, the next income tax bucket that's up there. Because that's essentially, part of that goes to the townships. And the way that, the way that I read it right now, it almost looks like it comes off the top, like you could do with public safety currently in our current environment. Most people don't do it that way because townships receive certified shares already, but.
So are we looking at volunteer, volunteer fire departments still as under township funding?
They're still under townships as, as of now.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't heard anything different.
And they also, do they need to come alongside their trustee to advocate for funding for their department then?
I mean, the way I would read that is if, if they request it, their, the fire departments request it, then they would go to the county council and do it, similar to the process we have in place right now.
But every resident pays into it, you said, so if your fire department didn't get the money, you're actually paying for someone else's fire department protection.
In that setting, yeah. That's why I said, I don't think it's, I don't think it's designed necessarily for that.
Brandon, can you define, can you define fire protection a little bit better? In that, in Bartholomew County, for example, we have the city fire department. We have the township fire department, and then we have municipality fire department.
Yep.
Does that, all that is included in the 0.4%?
No, township fire is technically not included in the 0.4% calculation.
So how do they get, how do they get funded?
So the next income tax bucket is 0.2%.
You said they could do an ordinance.
If, if, if they request it, is the way it was structured, and that's why I have that note in there. Go ahead.
So volunteer fire departments.
Yes.
Are contracted by the townships still. So they would fall under non-municipal civil taxing unit funding. Okay, if there is a fire territory district that has their own tax rate today, they would fall under fire protection and EMS piece.
Yep, well said, yep.
Do, you get that, George?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where I, that's where I, you clarifying where I understood him to say.
Yeah, and George, so cities and towns that provide fire protection are a part of this. So all of your towns and all of your, your city units would be a part of this bucket. And then your fire protection territory that you have in place. I can't remember off the top of my head who that is.
And then we talked, we're concentrating on township, but how about municipalities like Hope?
That is.
Or the town or?
That's what I was talking about. They're in the 0.4. The townships are not in the 0.4.
Okay, so Lisbon town, like it's, it's in a Lisbon town called Lisbon Towns, supported by Lisbon Town, but its major support comes from Rock Creek and Sand Creek Township. So where do they fall?
So that technically they're, and this is what Mr. Bell just said, that the non-municipal civil taxing unit bucket. So you guys would also have to make a decision.
They're supported by a municipality.
Well.
You, you can, you can contract, any township can contract with anybody for fire services.
Yeah.
They could contract with the city of Columbus.
Yep, sure.
Okay, so, so just because, you know, Rock Creek contracts with the same one that Lisbon Town does, it's, that's okay. That's, that's just a separate contracts service provider.
That's it. And I think the concept of this income tax is essentially to say the unincorporated areas and then, other than that 0.4%, I guess that would kind of fall into this point. But they're kind of taken care of and decided on, or the small units, by the county. You guys are the ones that are going to have control over their income tax stream. And, and that's where the non-municipal civil taxing units, so this is your unincorporated township level. Libraries fall within this, conservancy districts, and then there's one other type of district that you don't have. But that 0.2%, it is broken down by, and, and this is why I said, I'd love to, if you guys have questions, stop me because I really want to make sense of this. It has to be broken.
They got to do it annually then also?
Every year is the way.
But you request annually?
No, no, the township fire is, if you do the 0.2%, the township fire will receive the township contract money from, if they get their income tax.
Okay.
That's how it would be set up. But if they don't have enough, as you're going to see later, there might be some shortfalls. Then they can essentially request, I think the way this is set up though, anybody can come to the county and say, hey, can you help us out? But it's no different than right now. You can say yes or no.
But if we, it goes directly to them, it doesn't flow through the county?
The, well, everything's going to flow through the county, all the income tax.
They will be designated these funds.
Essentially, right now in a lot of cases, I've seen it done one of two ways. It either comes off the top of the income tax pool for public safety and then it lowers the overall pool for everybody. I don't know if that's their intention here. I honestly don't. If it's coming directly from the county and the county's shares, then it could be done exactly like what you're saying where it would be just essentially appropriated and then allocated to a unit. And you would just have contracts in place. But again, I, I don't know what the spirit of that is inside of this statute. I, I really don't.
Give us more clarity before 27.
Yeah, but they did, they did put a caveat in there for requests.
Let me, let me jump way down the road a little bit. Are you going to be able to give us capability to look in the crystal ball if we've got $10 of taxpayer money with, to make everybody whole where they're at? You're saying we'll always come back and ask. I would like to know where we stand moving forward, looking at crystal ball.
I have a projection that shows you the local income tax versus property tax impacts at the very end of this.
Yeah, we get to that.
And yeah, and.
The annual adjustments will fall back on us if they come back in.
It, it can, but not necessarily. I mean, that's not how this law is written. It's not that it falls back on the county at all. It's just if the county wants to collaborate with the units that aren't being made whole, then they can. But that's up to you guys.
Okay.
So, but it's up to us guys, but not nece- not necessarily all township fire departments are managed in the same way. Some of them spend more than others. And how do you, how, so we would have to be very aware, aware of how the township fire departments operate in order to be fair with all the departments, would, would we not?
Technically, what you would do is you would do that next income tax. That 0.2%, you would, you would be able to do 0.05% of that. Again, this one's assessed on every taxpayer in the county. That 0.05 would go to all the townships. And that's essentially designed to put their, replace the income tax loss they would have. Again, another lever you guys have to pull, and each time you guys do that, it's changing the rate.
Let me give you an example. There are some townships that, that their fire department is totally volunteer.
Yeah.
There are others that they pay their fire, firemen a salary of some sort. I'm not sure how they come up with that amount, but they pay them. So how, how, when, when you try to, I mean, we're not going to be able to tell a township, you're paying this guy and the other one.
Right.
Start paying the other one, you know, I mean, this, this can belong to many of us, we're not.
I think, I think we're over, overthinking the budget aspect of this. We're not, we're not, the county's not managing their budgets. The county's essentially making a decision on the revenue, on whether or not they still get, are getting an income tax subsidy from where it used to be. So right now they already get income tax. What, what I'm saying is it's going away. And whether or not you do the 0.05 is up to you guys, and that puts the income tax back in the townships to operate.
Yeah.
Likely a lot of that point, or the income tax they receive now is used to, to assist in either the township general funds, township assist, assistance, or the fire operations. So that's, that's really up to how they budget, how they financial plan. It's just a piece of their revenue stream. The big point I'm trying to say is it's going away unless you decide to do a part of this, right? The libraries are another one. They get income tax currently. It's going away unless you decide to do up to 0.05 for them as well. Those first three buckets cannot exceed 1 point, go ahead.
Now, the, the, let's use the example I used for the library. They, they do their own rate. The only time that they come to us is that if they have a budget and something catastrophic happened like it did this year or last, I'm, I don't remember, that they had some unforeseen expenses in an elevator and they needed for us to allocate more money to them. It was their money that, but we were allocating that.
Yeah, this, this has nothing to do with the, their property tax withdrawal piece. This is just, a part of their revenue stream right now is income tax. They get a component of that from the PTRC. That goes away. This is just an option to kind of try and replace that to some extent. It doesn't have anything to do with you taking care of their budget or doing anything like that. But in the case you're talking about, I mean, if a unit of government, regardless of this new environment versus the current one we live, well, technically we're not in it anymore, but the old one, if, if they have a downfall, they need help and, you know, they could go to you, they could go to the city of Columbus, they could go to anybody and try to get assistance.
I'm trying to understand, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, this is just, this is the lever that they have to, and we all have to do this yearly for just their income tax.
Just income tax revenue, yeah.
The property tax shares, that's.
That's a different story. We'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, which you technically have no control over that one. So, no, we'll, we'll talk about that too. But I, but I want to make sure, I mean, the, the questions are answered and, and it, it doesn't make you have to do more budgeting for them necessarily, anything like that. It's just, it's essentially your complete control over these green square boxes of income tax. And if you decide to do nothing on them, you know, at, at that point, then, then they don't get the income tax they used to get. That's, that's kind of the point I was, I was making there. The collaboration between community is, is going to be really important in this whole new income tax structure. It's really, really going to be important.
So what's, what's, is, is the maximum, those three added together?
Those three added together, the 1.2, the 0.4, and the 0.2 cannot exceed 1.7, okay? So that math right there would take you to 1.8. So likely what you do is the, let's say you do the 1.2, the 0.4, and then 0.1 for libraries and townships, which is how we've kind of designed the numbers as, as you'll see them later. The next one's the most interesting and probably the most confusing one. There's an additional 1.2% that the county council is in control of for what they call small cities and towns. That's communities under 3,500 in population. And, and based on what we found, Columbus and Edinburgh are the only two that don't fall within that bucket, or that do fall. They all fall in the bucket outside of Columbus and Edinburgh, okay?
In Bartholomew County, we have also little towns. I mean, we have Waymanville, we have Jones.
Only the ones that are incorporated.
All the incorporated ones that you have inside of the county, other than Edinburgh and Columbus, fall in this category.
On this category.
Yep, yep. But here's the weird thing. This one's assessed essentially on every single taxpayer except for the cities that don't fall within, so Columbus and Edinburgh. This is up to 1.2%, but the county keeps 75% of it. I don't know why it's written that way. You'll see the numbers. If you do the full 1.2%, it benefits the hopes of the world in places like that quite a bit. Because it's a lot of money when you think about it from across the board. This is an, an interesting lever to pull, okay? You, you definitely want to look at it because you, you, you've got other towns and, and small cities that are probably going to lose income tax and be in a tough way, especially when the, the property tax side kicks in. But you kind of want to find a balance, and that's something that we can talk about. That's, I guess, next level discussion. But a balance between all these rates. All these together can't go above 2.9%. The very last one on there that's not in green, those are for the municipalities that are larger, the 3,500 and over in population. So Columbus and Edinburgh would fall in this bucket. They can do their own 1.2% rate. As I said on the last slide, it's not levy-based anymore. So if Columbus makes up a huge portion of the tax levy, they've got a bigger, a piece of the pie for the historical local income tax structure. This is going to actually bring them down. They're not going to get as much. That's why they're going to certainly probably come to you guys and say, hey, we want to, we want to work with you to get that 0.4% fire EMS. Because they're going to lose money if not.
Is that irrespective, irrespective of what level city they are? Like for example, Columbus used to be a level three, now it's a level two?
Nope, doesn't matter. Just, just population, purely population.
Okay.
And I couldn't tell you why they put 3,500 in population. I will tell you, if they would have made the number smaller, I feel like most of those communities that are much smaller than 3,500 wouldn't have been able to generate a whole lot. And if you think about this, this is based on your AGI, your, your average household income, right? Like how much people make in your community is what's going to dictate this. So if you take a community of 3,500 and over that has an average household income of 40,000, they're going to lose a ton of income tax money because they're only getting the piece of the pie inside of their municipal boundaries. Okay, that's what that 1.2 is assessed on. So in Columbus, they do this 1.2, it's only on the boundaries of Columbus. That's why it's not increasing the rate above your guys' rate in any way. But if somebody lived in a community that had $150,000 average household income, they're probably going to see a benefit because of the way it's structured currently, depending on what their tax limits are. So again, we're shifting from this levy-based approach where the, the pie is divvied up based on your percent of that to population plus, you know, household income. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you said the maximum across all five of these is 2.9%?
Yeah, technically your total is 2.9, but the first four you decide on can't go over 2.9.
The first four is 2.9.
Because just remember the under 3,500 1.2%, you can't assess that on Columbus.
Right, but I, I just, I wasn't sure that, that you were talking all four, the four boxes or all five. Because if you were talking all five.
In both, it's both.
Yeah, because it's either or with four and five.
It's either or.
Like, you're either in the city of Columbus getting the 1.2.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So it's either or.
But, you know, my concern was, well, what if like the city did 1.2 and you could only go up to 2.9? Well then, the max of everybody else is 1.7.
It, it, that's a great, but that's a great question. So the unincorporated boundaries pay that 1.2 for the small units. So it wouldn't include Columbus already. So the taxpayers of Columbus in that situation would only be paying the 1.7, right? And then they would do their 1.2 and be capped at 2.9. What this incentivizes, guys, is actually a higher municipal rate. Communities over 3,500 in population are, are being incentivized to essentially do a higher rate because they're going to get their 1.2. They're going to have to, 100% they're going to have to. You're probably going to do your 1.2, and then they're going to be requesting for you to do the 0.4. Well, heck, that first two together is 2.4. You're at 1.75 right now. I mean, by default in 28, your taxpayers are probably going to, inside of the municipal boundaries, see a higher income tax rate.
So if you're a high-income earner, move to Grandy.
Yeah.
Outside of the, the boundaries?
Tony.
Yeah, Tony.
Does that make sense?
Can I ask a question, Brandon?
Yeah.
Can we sure Tony has a question?
I know it's not my meeting, but I think we're all, all of our heads are spinning.
I'm trying.
It's going to get worse, I promise. So are you?
Wait, wait, wait. Tony's asking, Tony's asking a question.
The fourth box, small cities and towns.
Yep.
All individuals residing in, does that mean that I who live in unincorporated Bartholomew County could end up paying that 1.2?
Yes.
That's only going to go to the people of Clifford that live 20 miles?
No, 75% of it could stay within the county.
75% does stay with the county.
Oh, it does.
Yep.
But my point is that where, everybody in Bartholomew County is paying the Clifford taxes, the Clifford 1.2%.
Just in the donut.
In, in, in theory, it's, it's done that way right now.
No, not in the city. Well, actually, why?
The donut.
Not the city or.
The city's excluded from that because the city.
Because they're doing their own.
They're going to have their own 1.2%.
Because we might actually only do 0.3%. I'm not close enough. Might only do 0.3% on that small cities and towns. We might look at the numbers and be like, we don't need 1.2. We only need 0.3 to make everyone whole. Where city of Columbus is like throttling it up. We're going to do 1.2. So you as a county resident might only pay a 2%, but inside Columbus, you might play 2.9.
So the, the unincorporated towns are really getting a boost?
Potentially, as long as they work.
Unincorporated towns?
As long as the county.
I mean, the, the small towns are getting a boost because they're going to.
They could.
I think that's, that's why we were talking, we got to strike a balance and say, okay, what, is it 0.3? If it's 0.3, let's not take it to the 1.2. We don't need to go to the 1.2. You know, in theory, you know, you guys have the potential to probably be very similar in income tax rate to what you are now. You'll kind of have to look at it and, and break it down. We've got 26 numbers now, so we can start to break down the growth in those. But again, the idea of this is just to understand the structure, and I know it is confusing. But the people in the Columbus and Edinburgh area, we'll just keep saying Columbus, for example, but the 1.2 on the far right, that number is only assessed on the people in Columbus. And the people in Columbus don't pay anything on that 1.2 for small cities and towns.
Now, why is that? Because they are county residents?
Carved out as well.
Yeah, it's either or, it's not both, it's one or the other.
Hey, Brandon, uh, uh, to, to get an understanding, when we talk about the city of Columbus, we're talking about the actual city limits of Columbus? Or, or, or does that include the two miles?
It would be every parcel in the city of Columbus that's, that's an actual taxpayer inside of the city of Columbus.
George, that's just for zoning, that's just for zoning, George.
Nope, yeah, no bubble, those are unincorporated areas normally. Yeah, that's a good question.
I think this will start to make sense as we get into the numbers, because I've had the privilege of seeing this presentation already. So not that I don't want more questions, but I think some of your questions will be answered.
You know how long we're going to be here, don't you?
Yeah, I think so, I'm like, we're going to keep going.
All right, um, so this is more narrative, uh, for recap of what we just talked about. I don't need to spend a lot of time on this. Um, the biggest questions, I would, I would jump to more of the bottom bullet points, but the biggest questions we still have are, uh, some of the, some of the ways the state is going to handle this. When, you know, it comes to your guys' office, you know, the auditor's office. Um, are they going to keep our trust accounts, uh, county level? I don't know. Uh, right now, there's a trust account for all ninety-two counties at the, uh, Department of Revenue. And I, I like that, there's an accountability factor to it, but I did read something that it might be rolled into the state budget. So how, how, how do we know at that point how we're going to project the future of distributions for these things? Um, where's the AGI database? How do we know how much the, the taxpayers and the income tax side of things are paying inside of our communities? Um, and, and how are we going to be able to kind of predict and project that stuff really accurately? Once that data is available, uh, which I know there's only a handful of counties that actually even have that data. Um, and I think that's why this is a twenty-eight rollout, because it's going to take a few years to get there. Uh, then you'll be able to start seeing this stuff really accurately in advance. Uh, but I, I think there's some things that they got to iron out. Uh, and I, I have a feeling that during the legislature this session, you're going to see some things discussed, um, maybe changed, I don't know, we'll see. Um, but we'll kind of keep track of that and be able to modify on, on a whim if we need to. So here's the graphs that we talked about, um, and that's what I think Leah was referencing that would make more sense. This is county specific, just the county. The far left bar graph with the multiple colors, that is your current local income tax revenue. That's currently what you receive, twenty-three, and that's as of twenty-five, that's not your, your twenty-six numbers. Um, twenty-three one seventy-nine, twenty-three million one seventy-nine, and that's broken down, like I, like I said, by certified shares, public safety, economic development, and your Dale tax. If the one point two is fully implemented, the one point two only, that blue bar in the middle is what it would go to. It would jump to thirty-eight million dollars just based on twenty-five members. Um, if you do the one point two percent in its entirety for the small units. The thirty-five hundred and under units, and you get seventy-five percent of that number. Um, and you, is that just Reagan, we got that at two point nine percent in total right there, right?
Yep.
Is that just, okay, so then that would give you fifty-two one seventy-five, it'd be another very large chunk. So one thing we found when we were doing studies for this for our presentations, um, for, for some of the trade shows. There's, there's eleven counties in the state of Indiana out of ninety-two that don't benefit directly from the one point two percent. Okay, there's, now, this isn't property tax discussion, like someone might be hammered on the property tax side, right? But, um, if you do the full number on the right here, um, just about every county in the state's going to see a benefit on income tax. And that's because of the way this new tax system's going to work. It's, it looks drastic, but we're going to get into some, some property tax stuff.
Does that not include the fire protection and the?
This is everything maxed out.
It is all four maxed out.
Correct, two point, that's if we, was it the two point nine over there?
The county and the small cities.
The, the, um, county does not receive the fire and EMS. So this is just the county's portion.
Twenty dollars.
Okay.
Two point nine total then?
No, uh, yes, this is if you max it out, yeah, sorry.
Two point nine.
Portion.
Yep, yep, but you would have to do the full one point two percent for thirty-five hundred and under units. And like Leah said, if, if it was point three, it'd be much less, the green bar would be much less, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but this, like Reagan said, this is the county's portion.
Okay.
What we did in this analysis is, um, essentially maxed it out, right? We gave, we gave the one point seven, we said that, just kind of worst case scenario. Um, if you have one point two percent, the original, we do the point four percent for fire and EMS. Um, and then we did point one to get, for the townships and libraries, and then you did the full one point two. That's what everything you're going to see throughout this is going to show. So, um, yeah, that's, uh, definitely a bar graph that, that paints a picture a little bit better than the, the boxes with detail, I know, so. Um, everybody good?
And the income number for the twenty-six budget was three point two billion.
For the net assessed value?
For the income tax.
Oh, total income tax? That's county wide.
If you, if you need that for your, yeah, that's county wide for your math. Yeah, we don't have that broken down, to this point, we don't have that broken down yet. I don't know if the state has that broken down between how much income is city, how much income is the donut?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it yet. Certified distribution forms are out now on the DLGF website, but I, like I said, this was built before those came out. This is in the last few weeks, it's not, it's very recent.
This is good for estimation.
This is good, but it doesn't tell us what all of the expenditures that are there.
We, we, they've got it coming, okay.
Yeah, I've definitely got the property tax loss comparison to this, so.
Yeah.
I don't have your budgets built into this, but we'll, we'll, we can talk about it.
Think about this.
We got time.
Yeah, I got as much time as you guys need, but you might hate me by the end of it. Um, all right, so this is the thirty-five hundred and under, the seventy-five percent portion, you just saw the green part of the bar on the last slide. Um, essentially, uh, Leah just pointed out point three, so that, we, we calculated this in just kind of different options, right? Um, this is based on the point three, a point six, point nine, and a one point two. Uh, that's where that green bar came from, the thirteen point four eight nine million, the brown is, is the county's portion. Um, and then if you were to do just the point three, um, it would be the three point three million. So still, still a benefit there, and honestly, that's where you guys start to come up with, hey, what makes sense? What is Clifford currently getting, Elizabeth Town currently getting, Hope, Artsville, you know, and then kind of back into those numbers. And this honestly could be a little bit higher now with the new income tax numbers that are out. Um, so I know that your income tax went up a little bit, so a- again, this is twenty-five data. So we, we, we could potentially back off that number even more if you had to. Uh, but this is how that would look in a table.
And this is why I'm saying, like, we don't have to max out the one point two, because maybe we only need point three to make those cities whole.
And that's what most of my counties are discussing, yeah.
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 Numbers that they come in with.
Yep.
And then every year you examine, that doesn't make change.
Yep. One, we don't need them to be quadrupling their budgets, if they don't need it.
But you also don't want your rate to fluctuate too much here to me.
We know data's coming in when we need, when we need these numbers at budget time. Like you just said, there's data that we don't have now that, that Pia was looking at in twenty-twenty-six.
Yep, they just dropped the twenty-six information.
Okay, so will we have this data time we set budgets on some of these, or are we?
No.
You're doing crystal ball here, you might be.
You'll have the twenty-six information in, in the same diagram. And I've already got it set up in an Excel database where we can just go in and just change stuff. We can go in and say, hey, what's point three look like? And then a max rate of whatever, um, two point zero. What does that give every unit, what's their before and after? But again, i- i- this is just looking at income tax. Uh, so when you start to look at these other units and you say, okay, what's their impact on the property tax side, we're going to get into that as well. Um, but this is the calculation for that piece of it based on twenty-five data. And yes, there will be more current information available by budget time. Point of this discussion obviously is to educate and understand the system change is coming, and you're going to have to vote on this in twenty-seven, so we do have time. We do have time, right? Um, so, but by the, like you said, by the twenty-seven budget, we're going to have to be making decisions on what that ordinance number needs to be for the rates for not just the county, but a lot of other units. So, um, the next one is the fire projections. Again, I, I told you about the, uh, the wonkiness of the calculation. I don't know why the twenty percent's in there, but, or the twenties in there, but step one is taking population base. We use census data, so it's probably a bit conservative, it's probably not, um, exactly the number of people in, in these areas, but. Um, and, and then we use, uh, AGI information, um, based on a lot of the stats Indiana data. So, uh, again, going to get more fine tuned as, as the, uh, the state releases more information. But then we took square mileage, multiply that times twenty, add those two numbers together, and essentially whatever percent you are of that total pie is the percent of what that point four generates, uh, that you're going to get. So you can see in this case, it looks like Columbus is getting a whole lot, uh, but I can tell you without it, it, they're looking like probably about a five million dollar shortfall, just on the one point two percent portion, maybe a little bit more. So, and again, we'll, we'll kind of circle back to all that at the end and, and, uh, get to the, the final, uh, the final nuts and bolts of it. So are we good to shift to a completely different topic that you're probably not going to love as much? Um, it may be a little bit, a little bit more confusing, but I want to, I want to make light of it, make sense of it, so.
Yep, let's keep moving.
Okay, yeah, you keep me on track. All right, so property tax. Uh, local income tax, uh, i- is done, we talked about that, we've shown some numbers on it, we'll bring it all back together at the end. Uh, property tax, what is happening to our property taxes? So essentially, we are pretty darn confident that the state's, uh, trying to move to more of a rate based system. Um, the one percent property class currently has, i- if you guys ever look at your TS one tax bill, it's got the forty-eight thousand dollar homestead deduction. Um, and it's got the supplemental standard deduction, which has a thirty-five percent number in there. Uh, essentially, we're getting rid of the forty-eight thousand and we're phasing that, that, uh, thirty-five percent all the way up to sixty-six point seven, uh, six, seven, to the, to the tax bill. So essentially what that's doing is every single one percent property, so your home, primary residence, um, i- is essentially who falls on those. Um, they're going to be capped at three dollars now. Their property tax caps kick in at three dollars. So they'll never pay more than three dollars on their tax bill. So if you live in a four and five dollar taxing district, circuit breaker's going up. Um, most of your guys' is not that high. Uh, I think Edinburgh's your highest one, it's around four. Um, Edinburgh's in three different counties though, so a little bit different scenario. Um, most of your taxing districts are underneath that three dollar threshold anyways, so, um, pretty good tax rate structure, not something super big to worry about there. But I'll show you a tax bill in a minute and make some sense of it, but, um, one percent property going to have a flat deduction of sixty-six point six seven percent by twenty thirty-one, so. Um, and then two percent is getting a brand new deduction, it's never had one before. Um, and that, that deduction's phasing in again, similar to the twenty thirty-one up top, it's going to phase in from twenty-six to twenty thirty-two to thirty-three point three four percent. And the math works out to be a three dollar cap on that type of property as well. Um, commercial and industrial property already capped at three dollars, uh, because there's no deduction and they're at three percent to get to the property tax caps. So essentially, um, moving toward what we would consider a rate based system. Um, some of the unknowns that, that we don't really know is, are they going to continue to do the maximum levy growth quotient, the four percent we had this year? Uh, under a rate based system, it wouldn't make sense to do that. Um, what makes sense in this system is growth. If you grow, you get more revenue. If you're flat, stagnant, don't grow, um, you don't get more revenue. Um, you're going to use income tax, you're going to use debt, you're going to use other things that you don't necessarily want to use or haven't ever used before. So really kind of considering the financial roadmap is going to be really important in this. Um, the biggest thing I'll tell you as we get into this, and, and I'll, I'll explain the table here. Uh, what we're projecting and showing you guys is the current system that we're under, before SEA one. Had it continued for that same period of time, with the growth that we've been seeing, what the rates were doing, because our rates have ten, technically been going down a little bit every year. Um, versus SEA one impacts. So I'm going to, I'm going to really dig into that point multiple times, but I want to make sure we're clear on that. It's not a big loss every time you see a negative number. We're still going to see some growth, we're just not going to grow in years fast. That's the whole point of this. So what, what that means is on the left two boxes, you go from that forty-eight thousand like I mentioned before, and already in twenty-six, that number's dropped to forty. Um, and we have that projected as well, uh, all the, all that information all the way out through twenty thirty-two. Uh, and it goes all the way down to zero, and so by twenty thirty-one, you're fully phased out there. Um, twenty thirty, sorry, and then supplemental deduction is phasing up at that same time. So we get to the sixty-six point seven percent in that bottom left box by twenty thirty-one. First few years, you don't really feel that very much, um, based on the stuff we found for a lot of the communities we've done this for. But around that twenty-eight time period, that deduction starts to phase up enough to where the homestead deduction coming down doesn't matter as much, doesn't feel as much. And you start to see that deduction kick in. So again, what is it doing if our properties aren't growing super fast? Um, year over year, which I know we're in a market value trend on homes, and that's probably a part of this, uh, uh, legislation, I'm sure. Um, if we're not growing really fast, what we're doing is lowering our tax base in this bucket. In the next bucket, the two percent on the top right, um, same thing, brand new deduction, never existed before. Um, this is going to lower the two percent bucket. Now, that's probably not the majority of where your guys' net assessed value comes from, um, but it does have an impact on that. Um, and then three percent's untouched, the bottom right has some notes on the, probably the most important one to understand is the first bullet point. There's a new tax credit. So every homeowner gets, uh, up to ten percent or three hundred dollars, it's capped at three hundred dollars. On whatever their current tax liability is. So once you go down through and you say, this is my property tax bill for the year, they automatically get ten percent or three hundred dollars of that number. So if I have a three, three thousand dollar, um, property tax liability that I owe, I get a three hundred dollar credit. If I have a thirty-five hundred dollar tax liability, I get a three hundred dollar credit. If I get a thousand dollar tax liability, it's a hundred dollar credit, okay? All the way up to that three hundred, so that's where your first year's worth of impacts are really going to come from, you know, countywide, is generally seeing these new credits kick in. There's some other ones that are on there, um, not obviously over sixty-five and blind and disabled, aren't necessarily, um, as common as every single homeowner. But we've done our best to put the over sixty-five in based on, uh, the circuit breaker, um, by parcel, so. Um, the, there's a couple deductions going away, solar credits, things like that. I, I won't spend much more time on this slide if you guys are okay with that, but, um, I'm going to get into a, a, probably one of the more impactful slides after this one with the bar graph. Um, but this is sort of reiterating, uh, stuff for when we're not sitting in the room together having this discussion. Making sure everybody can kind of reference, uh, the notes that we're talking about here. Um, but ultimately in the one percent tax class, uh, we anticipate a loss of one point nine million and, and just that alone from the credits and the new phase ends. Um, up to three billion dollars of tax base that you're not going to get in comparison to the old system. And this is where I want to keep emphasizing, had you continued down the path of the old system without these new deductions, you would have grown by that amount much faster. Okay, you would have had much more growth in that time period. Um, based on five years of historical growth patterns, that's kind of what we, we averaged it out and tried to be a little bit conservative. Um, you would have continued that pace, if you would have continued that pace, you would have seen, uh, pretty good growth. So this is artificially deflating that growth, right? It's not letting us grow as fast. So, uh, the two percent bucket, first year phase in around a hundred and ten million. Um, twenty twenty-three full phase in around one point three billion. Um, three percent commercial and industrial. So the big note here, and, and we can talk about this in more detail if we need to, but it's personal property, there's new exemptions on personal property that start in twenty twenty-seven. Um, essentially, there's a, a eighty thousand dollar exemption de minimis, so if you have personal property assets under eighty thousand right now, you don't pay taxes on them. Uh, personal property taxes, that number, that threshold's going up to two million. So that'll have an impact, um, not as substantial, uh, but it definitely, uh, will equate to something by the time you get to twenty thirty-three. Um, the other thing there is there's no deductions, uh, that are new on those. So I, I, I think on the, the personal property discussion, uh, without taking too much time on it. I, I think wh- wh- what you're starting to see is kind of a phase out here of, um, we've continuously seen legislation that talks about getting rid of personal property altogether. Um, this changing the exemption floor to two million basically says, hey, more property's not taxable now. Um, the next note down, uh, is any new personal property that you guys would see put into your community? Um, actually, that's not even on that one, is it? That's in a minute. All right, I'm just remembering it. Um, any new personal property as of this legislature is essentially got, it has no floor. So you can depreciate down, right now there's a thirty percent depreciation floor. Um, that depreciation floor is gone for any new personal property, all existing personal property, it's still got that floor. Um, we still are able to tax that in, in the, in the future, right? Um, but as people develop and do new, uh, cranes, manufacturing, things like that, not real property, not, not building land, stuff like that. But things inside of those buildings that were valuable, um, we're able to depreciate or see that depreciated down. we're able to depreciate or see that depreciated down below a thirty percent floor now for anything new that's developed. And that's part of this new legislation. Originally, it was written to get rid of personal property altogether. So we didn't, we didn't want that. That would be very detrimental to a lot of communities, so. Let's jump to that bar graph real quick. I mentioned this twice already, but what you're seeing on the left side of this graph is your growth trend kinda averaged out over the past five years. So you can see that twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-three current system, that's the pattern of net assessed value growth that you guys have continuously seen year over year, and a lot of that has to do with that one percent bucket, obviously, if you can kinda see those bar graphs, but that's that market value. That market value trending that we're seeing, we're like two to three years into. And what we're showing on the right side, twenty-six SEA1 to twenty thirty-three SEA1, is that line getting a lot more flat. That's the deductions being phased in on those same growth patterns. Okay, so we're still seeing it go up a little bit, right? We're not losing net assessed value in its entirety, but if you compare twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-three, the middle bar that's really tall to the far-right part, you're losing out on all that assessed value due to the new system and being fully phased in with these deductions. So unless we grow at a faster pace, much faster than the deductions phasing in, which is really gonna be a challenge, you know, that would, that would change this, this growth model. I know in twenty twenty-six, I saw the certified net assessed values were out, and, and I think the county was one to two percent in net assessed value growth, so that's not as much as, you know, you, you would, you would hope to outpace this type of thing. But I think a part of the reason why net was so low is because of the new deductions and new credits and things like that, so. Anything to add on that, or think about on that?
I questioned your nine point eight percent increase and your thirteen point four percent.
That's gross, that's not net, that's gross.
Where, I don't know where that came from. That seems really high.
Yeah, the gross assessments are-
I mean, I'm gonna buy a shit ton of farm ground if it's gonna increase thirteen point four percent a year.
On the two percent, but that's rentals too. I mean, that's like, that's like apartments, rentals, things like that. That's not just, that's secondary properties.
That's not just growth.
It's everything two percent class.
That's also, that's also, I mean, that's, you're, so you're saying, my house isn't gonna go up nine point eight percent?
I mean, it could, it probably has been trending up.
Mine has, gone up actually more than that.
And it's gonna continue, you think?
Well, I mean, that's why they're implementing a lot of this, because they're seeing the increases. Yeah, so we're in a one percent class, the homeowner class is essentially seeing a market value trend on their homes. If you looked at the gross value, the gross assessed value, which is kinda what we're basing the, the trends on, and then we're netting all the deductions out, the gross is like just vertical for most communities. I mean, they're, they're flying up, because homes that were assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars are now four years, three years into this trend, three hundred thousand or better. And I went and did a lot of research on this just to kinda validate this, this part, because I, I thought about it the same way. I'm like, that doesn't make sense. I know the gross side of it. The gross side of it does make sense, when you start to break that down and actually go look at the five years of history on that, based on the abstract data. But I actually looked at like parcels and assessments on these parcels and, and thirty to sixty percent in increase in assessed value over the last three or four years is what I was finding.
On the majority of the property or on-
On the one percent, just random homes I was looking at the GIS stuff on, and that's in Jackson, Bartholomew, I was looking all over the place.
And I'm looking at the assessor over your shoulder shaking your head.
Is that crazy?
It depends on the neighborhood.
Yeah, for sure.
Location-wise, I just didn't know if the total county was in the same territory.
So this is based on the gross tax base over a five-year average. That's what we, we took based on the abstract information that was out there for, for the state to do their, they essentially use it to do their certifications and to make other adjustments and stuff on it, but we tried to go back in and look at that pattern, and in that way, we could kinda start with the raw data and then do all the deductions on a parcel level, but you know, our net, our net assessed value increases have been doing that. You go look at your homeowner tax bill.
It tuned after this, but the last five years compared to the last twenty years is historically different.
Yes.
I mean, so do we recognize that trend's still gonna go that way, or?
I think that's a great point, and I think, Peter, you just said this too, but I, I have literally asked that question to, to people that are, that are making decisions on this. It's okay to, like, why are we making decisions on this, this concept that this is gonna continue for ten years? I don't know. I mean, they, they seem to think it's gonna continue to go up, but I mean-
I don't know what they're smoking, because it's not legal in this state.
Homes are- Homes are, homes are definitely seeing an uptick. Homes are definitely seeing an uptick. Now, part of that two percent piece, again, it's not just agricultural land. It, it's gonna be your second, your non-primary residence, rental homes, apartment complexes, things like that, and if those values are going up. And that's a good point. You know, well, technically, though, the market-
We've got a better budget, a lot more for our homes.
On the renters' side, it's probably gonna be passed through. That's kinda my, my concern for when I think about renters, but when, when you look at the home market, though, I mean, homes are already really high-priced, they're just not assessed at that price. And that's what the state's telling our assessors to do, is to get that trend up, you know, over year over year. And that's what's been happening over the last couple of years. If you look at your, your taxing districts, if you went in and looked at all your budget orders, and, and what the state certifies every year, you're gonna see that year over year, you've probably had a slow decline in your, your tax rate for each taxing district. And that's because of these, the way that we have these caps in place, the property tax caps, the maximum levy caps, these types of things, they restrict us from growing our revenue over four percent in this case, right? Unless we're completely capped already, we, you know, in that case, you don't grow at all, but we're essentially seeing net assessed values outpace that four percent in a lot of places. And, and to, to P's concern, I, I mean, I do agree, what happens when it flattens out? And now we have all these new deductions, well then that bar set on the right is gonna go negative, it's gonna go down, and then you're really talking about higher, honestly, higher taxes. That's what's gonna happen. If our net assessed values go down and we continue to do the same type of budgeting and, and the same type of maximum levy and things like that, we would see tax rates go up in our taxing districts. And, and that's, that's unfortunate if that happens. Yeah. So I, and, and I, I wanted you guys to see this graph to show you that there's still growth in there. It's super tampered, it's super held down because of the way these deductions are gonna phase in. And, and it can change. It can change with this next legislature. We could be having a completely different discussion next year, but I want you to see that the old system was, was patterning in a completely different way than the new system. Okay, we'll get off that. Here's the county-specific kinda chart table. Big thing to look at here is the, the brown bars in particular. SEA1 tax levy chart at the top, the very top one, we have your twenty-six old system versus new system, the SEA1 system. Expected tax levy reductions, your actual property tax levy difference in what you would've got versus what you probably will get, or somewhere around in there, was around one point two million dollar lower than what you would've got under the old system in the first year, and that phases up to about three point nine million. Obviously, the income taxes are an offset to that, right? Here's something to, to remember, and we're gonna talk way more in depth when we start to look at like the school impacts. These impacts are based on our, our tax rates for debt and our cumulative funds being held at a constant. Okay, so if we're not growing like we used to grow, like your cum cap development fund is capped at three and a third pennies. That, that, if, if you said it at this point, the new legislation over the last like five years says you can forget it and leave it right there, and if your AV goes up, you get more revenue. That's how that's set up. Or if you were a school, a lot of schools do this, they use debt structuring to fund capital projects. So if AV goes up in their community, they try to capture that growth in a tax rate without raising the, the debt rates, and they issue more bonds to do capital. So what this is saying is, you're, you're essentially the difference between the growth that you would've got and then the growth that you're, you're proposed to get. That gap right there is, is holding you back on revenue collections for CCD funds, for debt opportunities as far as keeping neutral tax-level debt. And a little bit is definitely due to the credits kicking in, and, and essentially the maximum levy not producing as much on the AV that we're showing. So phasing from one point two million to around three point nine million, and that's just the tax levy difference of what you would've got under the old system. You can see that number actually does still go from that twenty-two, twenty-three million dollar number up to about thirty million. But that's around four million short of what you would've got in the old system. The next one down's the net assessed value, which we kinda just showed you the bar graph on. And then the next one down is tax rates, in, in an environment with somewhat stagnant assessed values, you would see a tax rate shift. So if you continue to have a four percent maximum levy growth quotient, your tax rate would marginally go up each year. Now, for the counties, that's, that's not a big number, that's, that's very, very small each year, you know, fractions of a penny, but in a municipal unit with a two, three dollar tax rate already, that's gonna be a big jump. You know, depending on whether or not they grow, that's gonna be a fairly big jump, so. Makes sense? Are we good? Okay. So I'm gonna show you, I've got like maybe three more legitimately like data slides, and there's a lot of numbers on them and stuff, and then after that, we can kinda, we don't have to worry about talking about HEA fourteen sixty-one or any of those unless you want to. Yeah, we don't have to, there's gonna be a lot of information, but I wanna show you guys, we talked about income tax, we've talked about property tax, I wanna show you what it looks like on a taxpayer's tax bill. Okay? This is property tax, and then at the bottom I have income tax, but basically what we've done is we've taken just a random two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gross, or, yeah, gross assessed value parcel, and we've trended it over that eight-year period. So this is kinda saying, hey, this is what the value of that home would be over an eight-year period. And that's why, that's, that Pia, what made me go back and, and look and say, that doesn't, that seems like a big number, but quite honestly, if you did that at the forty, thirty, forty percent that we've seen over the last three or four years and doubled it, it would be more than that, it would've been over five hundred thousand. So I, I left it in there for that reason, but I want to kinda understand this is an eight-year trend, okay? Eight-year period of trending. If it keeps on the same pattern and so, and if it flattens out, then it looks a little bit less impactful, but the left side is your current system, so you have the forty-eight thousand, and then the supplemental standard deduction of one ninety-one, totaling two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in deductions, so that taxpayer's net assessed value is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. On the right side, you have a flat rate of the sixty-six point six seven, which equates to three hundred and thirty-two thousand. So the deduction is much greater, and the tax value on that parcel is much less. It's, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand versus two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is nearly a hundred thousand dollars less in taxable value on that property.
You've got to take a hundred and fifty dollars out in that quarter sixty-five.
Is this your house?
Yeah. Okay, and then the, the next one down is- Now, now we added one fifty and two fifty on top of that, but so clearly, yeah, you've seen down to the bottom here, but taxing district rates, and those are scaled under the current system versus old system. Again, if we continue to see growth in our current system, we'd see marginal decreases in tax rates over time. And then we're using Columbus taxing district here, we're using the city taxing district. We could do this for any, any parcel in any, any area, so. And then you can see that the total gross property tax bill would be five thousand on the left, on the old system, forty-three hundred on the new system. The cap, the tax cap is one percent of that four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. That's got a small cap on the left side one, so your max tax bill's four nine eight four. And then on the right side, your maximum tax bill's the lower number, the forty-three hundred, because you have less tax base there. But then you get a three hundred dollar tax credit, because they're over that three thousand bucks. So that total tax bill on the new system versus the old system is nearly a thousand dollars less for that individual taxpayer, okay? After full phase-in, this isn't in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, this is full phase-in. And then down below that, we just took, took a kind of a average household income scaled at three percent annual growth for that same eight-year period of time. So say that wage earner's at a hundred and six thousand dollars, the one point seven five percent, and this is just very basic math, just to show you, they would be paying eighteen fifty-nine in income tax. There's other factors that go into the income tax calculation, just to be clear, and net outs and things like that, I just wanted to give you simple, simple math for reference. Under a two point nine percent system, it would jump to three thousand dollars, so it'd be a twelve hundred dollar income tax increase. And I think the big point to make in, in our discussion, initial discussions, were, we're shifting from that property tax system to an income tax system. A lot of our, our subsidy and revenue is gonna have to come from whatever we do with those income taxes, not just for you guys, but like I said earlier, for everybody. So ultimately, it's close to offsetting the, the property tax reductions, close to offsetting any income tax, and if you make that two point nine percent less in the unincorporated area, it could be less, but we can, we can study that stuff in more in-depth, more focused on that later.
But if we make the two point nine, which we're not saying we will, but if we make it for two thousand twenty-seven, that is-
Twenty-eight.
Or twenty-eight, that's far less of a phase-in on the LIT side than it is as the property tax side is phasing out.
So it would feel like-
It would be a hit right up there.
It would be a hit to the taxpayer right up front.
Yep, that's, it's a great point.
Which is why we're gonna have to get really good at math.
And be very-
To be very fair to the taxpayer.
Well, and that's where you can model this out year by year also.
Yep.
Agreed, Peter.
Or maybe we phase.
I'd love to see the detail in those calculations.
Okay, yeah.
And the in-between years.
Brandon?
Excel?
It's too big. It's not even an Excel file.
Take a filter.
You could come down and hang out, we could nerd out on it one day. I mean, it, it's a lot, it's a lot of information, but we'd be happy to do it, for sure. Yeah, the state database is every parcel of ground you have in the entire county. That's how it's set up, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot.
Love to look at mine specifically.
And then it's, it's, yeah, we could literally filter it in a way that we could say, you know, give us your name or address or whatever, parcel number, we have all that data in there. And again, that's, that's based on the twenty-five parcel data, so the twenty-six won't be out till like October next year. Okay, so overall unit impacts, and I, and I talked about this earlier, this is kinda projecting the levy, the next slide's the one I really kinda wanna hit home with, but you know, please keep in mind, this is not necessarily saying you're gonna have a substantial shortfall, but it is, it is projected to be a levy reduction in comparison to the way that we used to collect on our old system. We're not gonna collect as much. The biggest ones you can see as you go down through this, and this is twenty-six in the far-left projected, twenty-seven in the middle, and then it combined for the two. Reason why we did the first two years is because the income tax doesn't kick in until the next year. The next slide's gonna show you a bit more detail. Obviously, the schools have a huge impact, and that's, again, that's the tax rate neutral concept for debt. If the school wanted to go out, and this is specifically Bartholomew County I'm talking about, but if they wanted to go out and raise taxes to issue more debt, they have the capacity to do that, I've looked at their debt rates, you know? They might not wanna raise taxes on their taxpayers, though, right? Most communities have been using the gross assessed value to keep those tax rates neutral instead of letting them fall off, and they do that through debt in a school more than anything. So again, this is, this is the offset of what they, what they could've done in the old system and, and what they're not able to do in the new system, okay? The next slide probably does it a little bit better. It's a lot more information. Sorry to the guys behind me, because I'm already squeaming on this one. The far-left bar, this is every single unit, far-left bar is the current twenty-five local income tax, for the current budget that we're in right now. Okay? Broken down across the county based on DLGF certifications. The next one, in the next little bucket area, the two next bars, is the income tax specific for the new SEA1 phase-in amounts. So the two point nine percent, again, would be the one point two percent for you guys, and you guys alone, the point four for municipal fire and for the fire territory. And it would be point oh five for township, point oh five for a library, okay? And then it would also be the city of Columbus's own one point two percent, and Edinburgh's own one point two percent, so everybody assum- assumptively is at two point nine percent. And that's the amount that that would generate, so you can see the income tax amount is a lot more if that rate was at that higher amount. You can see the surplus or deficit next to that by community. So when you mentioned HOPE and those small municipals would see a big benefit, you know, you could see at the full one point two percent, and Reagan, I don't know if you can even highlight, you might not wanna click it, but the full one point two percent, your, let's just use HOPE as an example, would see a two point nine million dollar increase in income tax.
I think their whole budget is two million dollars.
And that's, that's why I think we have made the point of, we don't probably need to go to the full amount, right? I have not realized the echo is so bad until I just heard myself. I have not realized the echo is so bad until I just heard myself. Yeah.
We, I, I don't know what the school's gonna do. I know you're all looking at the school number.
The school number is, is tough, because the two million dollars for the income tax is definitely going away. The thing I really want to point out on the school number, yes, it says twenty-eight million. Again, that's bond capacity and and things like that, all right? That is not necessarily, like, they're not losing that in their operations. Okay, they're gonna see a bit of an impact there, because they're losing two million dollars from income tax and there's no subsidy for that. Okay, that's, that's one thing that's always been some heartburn for, for our team. You know, as we've read this legislation, we saw, hey, what about Cagin Counties? Coit Counties don't have that, so there's no concern there, but Cagin Counties, which is the majority? Um, they're, they're not, their schools aren't receiving that local income tax anymore, so your big schools are gonna lose that right off the top. The twenty-eight million is the total number. Um, and then you see, if you look to the right, the second, that, that second to last bar from the right, that is the amount that we're showing is attributable to the debt. You know, if, if essentially they would have kept issuing debt with growth, they're losing out on that piece. It's not money that they're completely losing. They're still gonna have the ability to have their operations fund and things like that. But there is a lot of projects they're probably gonna have to forego because of this type of thing um, over this eight-year period and until it starts to levelize itself out. But if you see the difference between the twenty-eight and the twenty-five million, that's, that's the piece that's gonna be more attributable to um, the new credits phasing in, um, to circuit breaker potential, things like that, because of, because of the rate growth. So yes, the schools are definitely gonna have a bit of an impact. Um, in this case, it's just over two million on the tax levy side, and what I'm projecting to be right at that two million or a little more now with the twenty-six income tax number, so roughly, probably a four million dollar impact overall. Um, you know, unless they grow in their taxing district a whole lot.
Brandon, how does, how does that look in twenty thirty-three?
That is twenty thirty-three.
So they're only losing two million a year off of property taxes?
Not a year. No, it, well, is that what that equates to over eight years? You're already ahead of me? Yeah, so the twenty-eight million, is that what you're talking about?
Well, no, 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 no. No, as the property tax goes down, um, schools are predominantly locally funded by property tax, are they not?
No, the education fund is fully funded by the state. Um, so their, their education fund is based on child headcount, so they call it the A D M headcount, and they get a certain number for that. I haven't looked at school's budget, I just, I know how the schools work, but um, that education fund is gonna be essentially funded the same way as, as far as I know at this point. They haven't said anything about changing that. The operations fund, which is actually where your administrative staff, superintendent, things like that are out of. Um, and then the operational pieces of the budget for the entire school, that is property tax-driven, sort of like your general fund is. It's the same concept, max levy and all that. The C P F or their capital projects fund is a part of that maximum levy bucket, so that's a piece of that as well. Uh, but all those are in one pie by themselves in what they call the operations fund. And then the school has various debts. So right now, I know Bartholomew County has, I think they have two referendum debts that are in place. They will be exempt from the circuit breaker piece of this, um, because they were voted on. Um, and then they have a debt rate, and that debt rate isn't very much. I think it's only like twenty to thirty cents, and that's not terrible for a school, um, because their tax base is so high. The state did just come in and say, hey, we're not letting any schools go above seventy cents in their, in their debt rate. So again, they have flexibility to go up, but it would be a tax increase. And I think that's probably where their heartburn is gonna come from, because if, if the deduction system kicks in like what we're showing here, they're gonna have a lot less ability, because that gross not there. They're gonna have that, you know, kind of triangle, kind of go like that. And their ability to, to grow that, that debt without raising taxes is gonna be much less. That's the big concern. Um, and you know, you guys with the C C D fund, that's a big part of that. You guys with debt, if you, if you have any sort of revolving debt or loans that you guys do, that you do tax-neutral, same concept. Um, Columbus would be the same way. And that's the thing, I didn't want to create confusion with a big number on there without explaining that this is based on if they had continued to do like level debt service rates through growth in the old system versus what we're talking about in this new one. Uh, so really, the difference in that debt number of twenty-five, seven, nine, two, and the twenty-eight million is the impact that they would have more attributable to um, just direct tax levy reduction due to credits, things like that, and some of the other circuit breaker issues, things, things that they might face in their calculations. Um, the two millions probably just as big of a concern to me is, is what that, that difference is as well.
So the slide before, I think that's the property tax.
It's, yeah, it's sort of the same information, but for the first two years.
That's like more accurate, like then here, the school corp's gonna be, what is that, three point four short?
It, it, yeah.
That's more actual money, they're gonna be short.
Essentially, if they're, if they're gonna go out and issue debt to keep tax rates neutral, then they, they wouldn't have the ability to go up to that number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be short of that. It'd be more on the capital side, some of it's definitely gonna hit their operations.
Right, but on that cap side, because that's how they found out. So that's more accurate view of what they're actually.
Yeah, the other page is all, all the years added up.
Yeah.
Compared to the income tax model.
Yep.
They also lost funding for child education under the eighty-five too.
Right.
Which has nothing to do with this, but they are losing.
From the state.
But that would be their, that would be their A D M count number then.
Yeah.
So the state's cutting back on that number?
Yeah.
They eliminated it.
Oh.
Yeah, it's gone.
I don't know why.
They're, because the state is. Because the state is broke.
Yeah.
This Medicaid issue is real. Medicare, whichever it is, I confuse them.
So they're, they're adjusting your thinking because of that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because they don't have enough money to pay that, so they've had to just wipe out everything.
So the biggest thing I, I guess I would leave you guys with on the, the data that we went through, it's a lot we've unpacked and um, most people probably just need a beer right now, I'd say, but uh, the, the thing that, that I would really continue to encourage is, let's, let's kind of align on what that income tax rate needs to be. Um, definitely a community involvement, right? You wanna consider who the other people are that are involved in that. Um, you know, we'll keep an eye on the trends. To Pia's point, if it, if it goes, if the trends of market value start to flatten out and if the assessor tells us, hey, gross doesn't look good, then, then we need to start going, okay, these deductions are actually gonna hurt us even worse than this.
Yeah.
Right? So um, we'll, you know, kind of keeping track of that type of stuff, you know, the wheel's been invented at this point. Um, there are a couple other slides, uh, I don't know that I need to go into the details, they're just a bunch of narrative on. We can, we can look at them, but I don't think.
Can you throw a two cents in?
Me?
Oh, yeah, it's there. What do you say?
I was just curious as to what would happen if the one, two, and three percent buckets changed drastically. If we had a court case that added a lot more one percent assessment, or if we had a couple of big factories that went in that really increased that commercial, or my commercial values are low and the state says I've gotta increase them drastically. How would that affect the, what you're projecting, or would it?
That would be, that would be great. That would be ideal. I mean, and that's, so this, this model, this rate-driven, that's a great question. Um, the rate-driven model is really advantageous for high-growth communities. Okay, so the more we're seeing growth in our communities, the better this system works. Because if we're, let's say we're rate capped, meaning we, we are only allowed to go up to three dollars and, and once everybody hits three dollars on the tax dis- taxing district rate, which again, you guys don't have anybody really there other than one or two units. Um, then you don't collect anything above that third dollar. Well, if we're collecting a hundred percent of our tax revenue and we see growth in assessed value, we get more revenue. That's kind of the idea behind that. Um, and, and it works really well for, for a lot of the high-growth communities in the state of Indiana. Um, commercial industrial would be great. Um, I think, you know, to kind of dig in a little deeper, I think as we're, we're seeing that shift from commercial and industrial property value to the market value on the homes, right? So our homeowners are actually the ones paying more in property taxes, even though our tax rates have went down. So as our assessed values have went up, our tax rates have slowly decreased. Um, slowly and sometimes even fast. I think, I think there was one year it was five or six cents that dropped off. I think it might have been twenty-four to twenty-five. Um, the, the big thing that, that you're, when that happens, your homeowner is paying more in dollars because their actual gross value went up thirty percent, twenty percent, whatever it was. Your commercial industrial property are on a tax break. Does that make sense? We went down five cents on our tax rate, they don't have a deduction system in place, they're getting, they're paying less over here. So the more of that can come in, and I think that was gov- the prior governor's really big goal was to get more of that commercial industrial base to Indiana. Um, and the more of that we can get in there and the more we can sell them on low tax rates, uh, the better the whole is, right? But uh, my concern's always kind of also been, what about our rural communities in Indiana? Because we're really not considering the impacts of those areas that don't have that growth. So it's all on that one percent. It's all on one percent. Now we're hitting with income tax too, so that's a big concern. But i- if we have more growth in the, the home areas, we have neighborhoods coming to town, commercial industrial coming to town. Um, now, I technically would, it would, you know, to answer your, your final question there, it would actually probably increase that gap a little bit more based on the old system and new system if it exceeded the amounts that we projected in here, right? It would, you would have had more opportunity under that system to do, to issue a debt with level debt rates or um, get more revenue on your Q funds or see more money from your four percent growth quotient. Um, now, if it flattens out and it drops down, that gap would get smaller and, and the difference, it's kind of a weird inverse relationship, so. Um, but that would be good. If we grow more and, and exceed these numbers on here, that would be, that would be great. Um, while the deductions are kicking in. Once those deductions in twenty thirty-three are fully phased in, growth is gonna be everything. That's kind of what I meant by my initial point with the rate-based system works really well with high growth. So as we get into the twenty thirties, um, we need to start figuring that piece out too, like how, how are we gonna start to even this thing out? So. Long, long answer, I'm sorry.
It's like a Brown County is really in a tight spot, because they have very little industry. Whole lot of property that's not on the tax rolls, it's federal or state property.
Totally.
Yeah, but their income tax structure is gonna be really good because of the new system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question in the back of the room.
Oh, no, sorry. I was fucking Marcus and I were.
Oh.
I had a conversation, sorry.
I love it. Question answered.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. We had our Association of Indiana Counties conference last week and we heard from um, the uh, policy analytics in regard, they kind of did kind of the same scenario as you, just not just Bartholomew County. But they were saying that it's going to really impact the lower assessed value homes, that their taxes are not going to decrease, theirs are going to increase. The deductions and everything that is, you know, going to be happening um, within, you know, that a longer period of time. Those are the ones that are gonna be impacted. Um, the, you know, your higher assessed value homes are going to get a larger deductions, just like what you had showed.
That's a great point.
And the eighty thousand and less homes.
Yep.
Are going to be paying more.
And, and in income tax, right?
And the ones that probably are not able to really, because they don't have the income either.
Yeah.
They're gonna be hidden.
So that, yeah, deduction's a great point. The, the, the people who benefit the most are the people in the high A V value homes.
Yeah.
You know, we tried to show you kind of a mid-yap, you know, five hundred thousand dollar number, but what's your, you know, your, if you're two hundred thousand, you'll still see a benefit. But it'll be a break-even, you know, to Barb's point, down probably a hundred thousand and under on a home value. Um, where, where they don't benefit from this new calculator. It's a great point. I, we actually did that internally as well, and, and I, I was like, oh, boy, like. I don't know, I'm surprised policy said that in a, in a meeting or in an o- or in the open discussion.
Was it DeBoer? Was it Larry?
It was Larry DeBoer.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me about Larry.
Good, I'm, I'm glad to hear it though, that's a good point. Mathematically, that's how it works.
Yeah. All right, I know we're all overwhelmed.
There's, yeah, we're not gonna do these other slides, there's just a couple small.
There's more slides in here, because we're talking about wheel tax, all of that, which now you see why I'm like, we're not doing wheel tax.
Yeah, we're, that's why we'll just not talk about the wheel tax slide.
Yeah, now, the other thing it impacts is things like CEDIT, that goes away.
All that goes away.
It all comes into the county type of thing, so when you think about what we need to work on. So I'm gonna look around to you guys, and you don't have to make any decisions right now, because I can appreciate we need some time to digest. But this is probably not the last time we need to talk to them.
Correct.
And, and Pia has already said, I want more information, so she's probably gonna have some field trips in her future. But um, I want us to think about it potentially during new business section next week. Talk about what do we need moving forward with them in terms of consulting, continued study, evaluation? Because we're gonna really start feeling this pinch. Again, we knew we were gonna go down the next few years before we come up, but we need to be able to understand partnerships with the townships, partnerships with these small towns that can't vote for themselves. What does firing district look, because this is all on us come twenty twenty-seven and making those decisions. So we get one year to figure this out, and then it's, we're gonna have to start voting.
And I'd like to see the dollars that's available and sweeping kind of back at that rate.
Yep.
And, and intentionally protect some of these.
Yes.
Ultimately, a model that we could throw at them and they could listen back and forth, so there's gonna be multiple discussions because.
Totally.
And, and not only these moving parts, what's the state legislature still doing over the next twelve months?
Honestly.
Maybe we're doing everything again.
Between, I would say November, roughly Thanksgiving timeframe to February, March, I mean, we're gonna be all about that. Like, we're gonna be stuck in probably arguments and discussions and math and.
Because this is gonna change a little, because they know they've made some oopsies. Well, I don't know if they didn't.
I hope, but I've met with some of them too, and, and I, I think, you know, I think it's just getting the information out there and, and making sure they understand, hey, it works really good in, in certain areas, Carmel, Noblesville, those places are gonna see a nice benefit. Um, but not in, you know, City of Vincent's, Indiana. You know, with no, you know, Sullivan, Indiana, these places with no areas to go to them directly with no industry. You guys mentioned a couple areas like that, some of the Hope, Indiana, maybe with income tax, but you know, those places aren't gonna build big commercial industrial and have big, big wage earners living there, so how do we balance that? And the model for the income tax piece, I, I, we have that invented, it's pretty, it's pretty fun. We can, we can throw that up and, and try to, try to finagle it, see what might look good and kind of do the before and afters with income tax, so.
The good thing too is in the interim period, between now and when you can implement different income tax methods, we have a really healthy balance sheet.
Yes.
We have a really healthy uh, rainy day fund. So for Columbus County government itself can weather through this storm. Some of our other units that don't have that backstop are gonna be.
Totally.
I totally agree with you, Pia, with the exception that if we continue to give money away with everybody who comes in and asks for more help, we will not, we will lose that capability.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yes, we're in a very good position right now if we continue to hold and, and we're careful who, how do we continue to, and how much money we continue to give away on people that very good projects and all that kind of stuff, but we have to be very careful.
I just need to know what our contractual services so far with your group and moving forward. And I think collectively, we need, need to figure out what we want.
Yeah.
And to give it back to you and say, this is what we need to help us through this process with the moving parts.
Yeah.
This is the only thing we've been contracted.
Yeah, this is it. This is like sort of the hard stop. That's why I'm like, we need to talk, so we can move back.
Yeah, and it's not exceed fixed contracts, so we're not, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where I got my head spinning tonight, and I can see much more dialogue.
It's okay, yeah, call us, reach out to us, like, that's what we want to be as a resource.
I would like to see much more work sessions.
Like this.
This, like this in this session, so that we can get to start understanding what it is and what kind of the impact. And the other piece is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pia, but most of the time, we do a budget thinking that we're gonna be getting X amount of dollars, because the state doesn't come back and give us the actual money or actual dollar amount until after we have come up with a budget. Is that gonna be the same situation here with, with the lit and all that kind of stuff? You know, I'm just raising that as a question.
Tech, I mean, technically, I, I don't have the distribution idea of what they're gonna do. If they keep it the same as it was, lit will be certified, you'll know your number in advance and you'll get it on a monthly basis, but um, I don't know what they're gonna do with that. And it's, I mean, it's a good point to be, to be thinking about. I mean, Indiana's interesting, local units of government in Indiana. They budget for a calendar year, twelve months, and they receive their major source of revenue in property tax in June. So you're already running in arrears. You got six months worth of spending and, and no major revenue, you know? And that's, to Pia's point, it's nice to have a good balance sheet in place, a good income statement to where you can subsidize that, so. But I think that's part of it. I think you've got to think about the forecasting and the financial roadmap for the future, so.
Tony.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, do you foresee any chance that this could be postponed? The implementation of this could be postponed here in rumblings of possibly pushing some of this back to twenty thirty-one? The implementation of this could be postponed? Hearing rumblings of possibly pushing some of this back to twenty thirty-one instead of twenty twenty-eight? Are you hearing any of that?
For income tax or for property tax?
I'm just hearing about the project. SCA one.
Property tax, I don't see that happening after talking to some of the people I've talked to, but they, they, they are all about shifting the, the deduction system in place. To my knowledge, in some of the trade shows I've been to, they've talked about that stuff too, but um, income tax, I could definitely see that. I could definitely see, um, I've said from day one, and I think the first time I ever met you guys, but like the income tax formula, as you just saw there, it benefits the county more than it does everybody else. If they shifted the one point two initial rate down a little bit and they increased the thirty-five hundred and over up a little bit, I mean, is that something they could do? I don't know. I know they're talking about it with, with um, tons of communities and areas that aren't many benefiting from it directly now, so.
If they go through with the property tax adjustment and they don't do the income tax, then you're gonna be.
Well, the property tax is already in the ABST system. I mean, your deduction system's already got it in there. You guys use Lapp?
No, we use GUTS for.
GUTS, so that all those software systems, and we've been seeing, we've been talking to software systems like crazy because of the way that some of this stuff's being handled in there and with the TIF side. But all that's in the software already. So it's happening for twenty-two.
But if they do that without doing the income tax, we're gonna have the shortfall without the opportunity to get it back.
Yeah, then we get a pickle. If they push the income tax back to thirty-one, that'd be an issue.
I don't know how they would be able to pass that with what they're already doing to the cities and towns. Income wise, I think cities and towns would light up the state capital. I don't think they can push us back to twenty thirty-one.
That is the rumor at the AIC auditors um, conference.
Okay, so I'm not the only one. I didn't imagine that.
I had came back and told Pia and Daylene the same thing. That was what we had discussed in that meeting.
We're gonna hear rumors all over the board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how they do that without like bankrupting cities and towns.
They're gonna have another budget session in twenty-seven. They could do whatever, what they want.
Oh, they totally can, which means they could even give us more, like.
All of this could be different in a year, yeah. A lot of it, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. And our, our hope is to have the year on the ground and, and know what's coming and hopefully have influence on it.
Is there any change? I've not paid attention. Are any of those key legislators who wrote SCA one going out of office?
I don't know.
No, I'm excited to see head shakes, no. Cause that's how this ultimately changes, is if there's new leadership on those committees. And if they're not going out of office, they're not giving up their leadership.
Communities are making a lot of pressure though on the ones that aren't them and them, but the ones that aren't them to push them to do something. I, I don't know if it matters, but we're talking about state level government now and, and this got put through in less than six months.
Yep.
I, I just, I haven't seen it like this since the circuit breaker came.
Right. And that was Mitch Daniels, baby, right?
Yeah, that was in two thousand eight legislation.
Yep.
That was, that was an interesting one.
It was.
Yes, sir.
I have a little bit of a technical question. Alright, so we've got county services at one point two. We got the small cities and towns at one point two.
Uh, yes.
Of which the county gets ninety percent of that.
Seventy-five.
Or seventy-five percent. So it gets one point nine. So in effect, of that two point four, the counties would end up with two point one of that. Right? When you add the two together.
Yeah, dear.
If, if, whatever rate we decide is appropriate, we still have jurisdiction over any excess funds to allocate to any.
Yes.
Any method we want to, whomever we want.
Yeah.
So as long as, as long as we have that, we can make people whole. We can figure out a way to make people whole individually. You get a hundred thousand, you get two million, you get zero one, right?
If you, if you wanted to go down that path, absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, I, on, on one hand, I don't want to control hopes or win township. But on the other hand, um, I also don't want Hope to have three million dollars more and then all of a sudden get real happy about what they're gonna spend it on.
Well, and that's where that, okay, maybe we bring it down to point two five or point two or whatever it needs to be. So, and that's why I made the comment earlier. I mean, you might be able to get real close to your one point seven five right now. But Columbus won't.
No.
So, and that's the thing.
No, but our town residents could.
Yeah, yeah, unincorporated in your small unit residence.
But the fire, you thought they would be about four million short?
Without the fire, they'll be four to five million, I believe, short based on what we had on there. Yeah, the net difference um, for them was a net benefit, but um, if the, I think they had a net benefit of five million after, after the full point four was phased in. Columbus city. Net, so the net benefit was the five nine, so the eleven million that we showed earlier from fire EMS that would go to them, without that, it would be a negative five. Yeah. Their local income tax alone, uh, one point two percent is not enough to subsidize the amount they, they currently get. So if they lose that, the, the one point two by itself won't be enough. I don't think we have that broken down on here. Yeah, that was eleven point two, I missed your reference. I thought you were trying to find there. Alright.
Okay.
And, and everything could change next budget cycle.
Lots of information.
I know there's um, several people from impacted points of government. Any questions you may all have?
No questions. I just, um, thank you to the county for having this presentation. And I just encourage in anything we can do to continue to understand what the true impact is, right? I mean, that's the problem, right? Is I think all of us are just kind of flying blind. And so any information we give is, is very, very helpful and valuable.
And continue to reach out to us, the auditor's office with questions. Sandy?
One thing I would ask is, um, I know you, Daylene, sent out invitations to all the townships and everything. Could they also forward this slides presentation to the units?
I have no problem with that. Daylene, can you? Perfect. Thank you, Sandy.
I think it'd be hard to understand without the presentation.
Hard to understand with it.
Lost the recording. You might put that in, or you can put a, uh, the recording, Pia or Daylene.
Will we know as, you know, as the economy goes down, income tax goes down typically? So is there a forecast process or, or something to look at so that we would begin to know that maybe we're not gonna have quite as much income tax as we think we're gonna have? Um, you know, in the future kind of thing? I mean, is that just a nationwide thing you have to look at or are there?
Well, federal government shutdown. The person that was in charge of that, so. You don't have that information.
Yeah, I mean, you can do like GDP trends and things like that, and we've done risk analysis for income tax recession type stuff. But I think the best thing you could do is kind of have more of a proactive approach to your financial planning process and kind of safeguard yourself against the bad. I, I, we lived through it in twenty-eleven when it happened, right? When those seven, oh eight, oh nine type crash area happened. Twenty-eleven's when we really felt that. So we would have a two-year indicator um, based on how income tax works, but um, hard to guess how hard, how bad it would be. And, and you know, if it, if it goes into something bigger than like a recession type thing, then it, it's, it's, thank God for a good balance sheet, you know, or just get tight, so. But. I, I don't have a good answer for that.
But basically, there's a, there's a one and a half to two-year window there.
Yes.
That we could see it in advance.
Yeah, and here your income taxes are collected a year and a half prior to when they're distributed.
We're already pumping the brakes, so.
We can track like your certified income tax or your actual unaudited income tax distributions at the state levels. That's why I'm concerned if they merge it into the state budget, we would not be able to track it. Cause I don't even know where the accountability of that would go. So uh, that's why I'm hoping for good information from the state side and, and kind of, maybe that's why they're talking about pushing some of this back, cause they don't have that data. Not good. But, once we know more, we'll definitely share it with everybody.
Keep thinking on what else we need to be doing because I think having someone to help us is key.
Knowledge is helpful.
It looks like Daylene has more house.
I think Judge Rodi, is he still on Zoom?
Yes.
He wants to talk to you about something real quick.
Bring on the judge, or unless Tony, do you wanna go in front of him?
I have something that I can wait for the judge.
Is the judge ready? He might have stepped away. Go ahead.
Tony, I'll defer. Tony, I'll defer. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make the council aware, uh, we're not meeting on Monday for fall break. I was actually surprised to hear you guys were, but uh, anyway, we're going to uh, be asking for an additional appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars uh, for our consulting line. Uh, this has to do with uh, our lawsuit with regard to bio solids as well as uh, a law firm that we're dealing with uh, with regard to some back IRS issues. Um, in the past several years, we've been using our ARPA funds for consulting fees and, and uh, unfortunately, we've already spent uh, about a hundred thousand dollars on the bio solids lawsuit. I can't go into any details today. Y'all, I'm sure understand that.
Yep.
But um, anyway, that's gonna be our request on your meeting um, Monday.
Appreciate that.
I, I'm sure somebody will be here. Maybe Carl will be here presenting, but um, anyway, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
That makes sense to me. I mean, we can't.
It's not a law. We have one lawsuit.
Okay.
We have one lawsuit uh, that we're dealing with with regard to the bio solids. It's been well publicized. And then we are using a um, a, a law firm, Ice Miller, to help us work through a, an IRS issue stemming from way back. That we're still working through that. I don't have any definitive answers. It sounds like it's working out. PMA have more.
And we're working through that process and we've had one of those, you get good news and then they send you a letter that they need another ninety days and, you know, the government shut down, so who knows how much the IRS is working on, you know, these type of cases right now. And we haven't had much communication of late, so.
Have we advertised? Have we advertised?
Yeah, that's been advertised.
Yes, it's the, the additional appropriation has been advertised.
Okay, good deal. So we'll be able to borrow it next week.
Yep. Yep. Thank you, Tony.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony.
Judge Rodi, first, I'd like to apologize. Uh, I didn't see you on stream. I told you, we tried to get you at first. House cleaning before we got into this, so.
I'm sorry, Judge.
No, it's fine. I enjoyed listening to everybody.
Alright, take it away.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Okay, uh, so uh, my request is, uh, we've submitted our budgets and uh, and so I need to change something in my budget for your second reading. Uh, in working with the auditor's office, uh, we were able to find uh, a, a potential issue that can just be resolved. Uh, we have four public defenders in our, in our, in my court specifically, um, and those are funded. Uh, three of them are through the um, uh, jet, um, our standard budget and the one hundreds. And then the fourth one, uh, well before my time was funded out of a non-reverting fund. And again, working with the auditor's office, uh, we determined that the amount of money coming out of that fund is uh, greater than the amount of money going into that fund. And so we just need to move uh, that fourth uh, public defender's payment from that non-reverting fund into the one hundreds uh, for your budget reading. Um, and then over time, we'll be able to resolve that issue. There are, the uh, amount of funds going in have been um, stable and uh, essentially the same over the years. And uh, eventually we can correct that, but at this time, we just need to switch that, our budget requests uh, from being paid out of that non-reverting fund until um, uh, until we can get that issue resolved and pay that out of the one hundred. So we're just switching, not asking for any additional money, it's just switching it from um, how it's being paid um, in our requested budget. And I would like to thank the auditor's office for um, um, uh, finding that issue and bringing it to my attention.
I also appreciate that. So thank you to the auditor's office. Thank you, Judge Rodi, for bringing that to our attention so we can um, acknowledge that in our second reading.
Second reading, in the second reading, I was at the Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting Friday and I spoke to Brad Barnes and there was uh, on the first reading about um, them replacing, needing to have council approval before they replace one of their staff members over there, which would delay them, hinder them, I guess. I don't, I felt they were excluded previously, other than fire and everybody else where they didn't have to come back. And was that in the first reading that we had that?
Yeah, right.
I don't.
I mean, we, it was just a nine-one-one and the, and the sheriff's department in the jail.
I thought that we.
No.
Well, I thought from attorney.
The sheriff's has never been excluded from that.
Well, from the, what, what my understanding was when Chris Monroe was our attorney, the discussion was that if we set a budget for a department head, X amount for X amount of employees, they can fill those employees through the calendar year. We would only have authority at budget time to exclude those employees that are open, cut their staff, just like we did this year. We cut two community corrections or.
No, that, 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 that we could record, you're saying. If, as long as it's in the budget, they can replace a person. However, we can reduce that.
Right.
At any time throughout the year. And, and therefore they cannot fill that. If there's an opening job and, and we have the time or we feel that we need to, we could go ahead and reduce their budget by that, by that amount and by that person, and they will not be able to. But as long as the money's in the budget, you are totally correct. They can fill that job.
And I'm thinking that if they're, we're paying overtime for them to come back to fill a position we've already approved. I don't think that's, that's counterproductive for government. To request them to come back, pay another employee overtime because they're losing employee and wait thirty days to come back to this board to fill a position. Am I missing something? Cause that was my understanding what the directive was because that's, that's what we're telling them to do.
So, so why, why can they fill the job? I mean, it's in, it's gonna be in their budget.
They think they need approval to fill it and they're losing time because of how often we need.
I don't think that they need any approval. They have the money's in the budget.
That can approved already and the dollars approved, right?
Yeah.
Is there something, they were excluded on the.
Did we go into headcount during budget?
We did on a, on.
I mean, I, I thought you guys were gonna make it that, that if, if, if a job came open, they had to ask for approval.
No.
I mean, I thought, I thought that's what, I thought that's what, I thought that's what you guys were gonna do.
We did say that, but. But that wouldn't go into effect even if we're doing it till twenty twenty-six. So I'm confused what his issue is right now.
With the second reading.
But if he's trying to hire someone right now.
It's next year that it goes into fact.
I'm confused what the actual issue is as we're.
The, the issue is if he's got a.
This is hypothetical.
Hypothetically, he's got twenty employees over there in the, their corrections department. He loses an employee before.
I can clarify this. Okay, so on the salary ordinance, we have in, on the last page and it's in your um.
You emailed it to us.
Drive.
Yep.
Um, you can look at it. It says any full-time position that comes open, you're asking to come before council to justify why that position needs filled. Except, right now, it says Sheriff's Department, Jail, E nine-one-one and U Service Center. Brad is asking for community corrections or at least the um, or court services or at least community corrections to be included in that because they are twenty-four seven.
Nope, that's fair.
That's something that would go down to the agenda for Monday.
To discuss that, to add them to the, to the exclusion list.
That should be an item for the agenda for Monday.
That's.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thank you for it.
Are there any questions for, from council line?
Oh, Judge, no.
Thank you, I, Pia and Daylene, I'll get with you then. Thank you.
Go home, Judge.
Anything else we need? I'm onto a jury.